Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
We'll call the mean to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you choose the agenda?
One item I'd like to add under administration, Mr. Mayor, and two items. One, I would like to talk to the council about finalizing the banner style for the streetlight banners. And the second part is I'd like to talk to the council about planning augmentation services to help fill our staffing gap until we can staff back up.
Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda is adopted. You have a few presentations. First, of course. Haley, you're leaving this.
Can we skip this one? It's not allowed to happen.
You could have amended the agenda.
I should have.
You should have amended the agenda. Renee, you want me to go first or you want to go first?
So as much as I have been trying to avoid that this is actually happening, I guess it's time to amend it. Haley, when we first entered you for an intern position in 2018.
It's gonna be tears.
We knew that you were the best candidate. Your internship experience was interesting and we thought that you would be a great fit for the short internship opportunity. What we did not know about you at that time was how little direction that you needed to perform all of your duties, that you literally needed no training and somehow just knew how to do everything. We did not know that you could literally do everything in the office from handling utility billing questions and software to city clerk tasks to planning director and city administrator tasks, and then you took them on board.
Anytime that was needed. We did not know that you would operate at what seemed to be a planner with 10 years of experience, somehow mysteriously. We did not know that you would draft the city's park plan on your own initiative or map out a vision for implementing housing diversity in our community along with a list of tasks for implementation. And we certainly did not know that your organizational and project management skills far surpassed that of Tom or I, but we were certainly glad they did. You have helped every one of us in the office immensely. Oftentimes, you've kept Tom and I looking good behind the scenes, always being our go-to person when we needed to get something done quickly and short notice. What we know about you now is that you can do anything that you set your mind to, that our loss Cedar Rapids gained, and that you will go far in whatever you choose to do. I hope that we have provided you with a good foundation and a good experience and allowed you every opportunity to learn and advance your career. And I speak for Tom and all four of your mother hen in the office. And I'm sure the council and consultants as well when I say we're gonna miss the heck out of you.
Here, here.
I don't want to follow that. Haley was first hired as a community development slash administrative intern in October of 2018, and as a planner one in July of 2019. Haley has accomplished a great deal during her time with the city. Haley has a keen talent for ordinance research and writing, and she has helped to amend several sections of the city code where there were in need of cleanup. Haley developed an annual code enforcement program in the city, and within her two-year implementation of this program has helped to change the culture of the community. Her excellent communication style and way of working with residents has helped the implementation of the sometimes difficult program. Haley assisted in drafting the city's 2040 comp plan and took special interest and involvement in drafting the park plan and park-related policies. Haley developed a passion for housing-related issues and serves on the county's housing work group. She embarked on an educational campaign educating the planning commission, city council, and the public regarding housing-related issues. She identified tools to foster affordable housing and housing diversity within the community. With Haley's work and project management skills, the city has implemented many of those tools. The city has been fortunate to have Haley's planning, organizational, and project management and people skills during the time that she was here. The policies Haley has helped create will have a lasting impact, and Elko New Market and its residents will be a better community because of Haley's work and commitment to the planning field. Thank you, Haley, for your hard work and dedication to the city of Elko New Market and its citizens. We wish you great success and happiness as you embark on the next chapter of your planning career.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a certificate for you.
All right. All right, superintendent, follow that.
It's tough. I didn't know it was.
Welcome.
Yes. Well, Mayor Julius and council and staff, it's a pleasure to be here tonight and give you the state of school district for New Prague area schools. I would just start off, you know, talking about what our mission and vision is, and that's to engage everyone, students, staff, everyone, in high levels of learning. And our vision, what we want to become is to become a premier school district that models excellence and embraces 21st century. And I always talk about this any presentation I give with our staff and everything, how we're gonna be successful, how we're gonna achieve our vision. We believe in two things, talent in all areas, be able to improve through hiring, and then obviously develop within. And we do this through our culture. We call the New Prague Way. We do what's right. That's how we earn trust. We commit to excellence, and we show people we care. Basically, we follow the golden rule. Those are three expectations when we hire people that we talk about, that we constantly remind, and that's basically our values and how we're gonna behave. So we think doing those two things, we believe in the people, that's how we're gonna be successful. Our five priorities, before I get into things here, is obviously academic achievement. We want to provide a safe learning environment. We want comprehensive programming in all areas, academic and the activities, and like I said, these are strong co-curricular activities. We always say the three As. We want to be, you know, the very best academically, provide that, meet kids' needs, but also we believe in having a strong fine arts program and athletic program too. So they're all very important to us. And then also keep up to date with our facilities and technologies. So those are our five priorities as a school district. And as I go through this today, a lot of what I'm gonna talk about is the impact on the school system with especially what COVID's had, the pandemic's had, and it's almost going on two years now, on academic achievement, mental health, our enrollment, finances, and staffing. So with that, just on academic achievement, we always, one thing that stays constant, obviously, is comparison with the state, and we want to keep a greatest separation as we can with the state average on our MCA scores, for example, which I'm showing you here in math, reading, and science. And obviously, there is, you know, a pretty good separation, probably down a little bit in reading that we've had in the past. We also do comparisons with our neighboring school districts. You can see here in math, we're tied for the top there on kids meeting or exceeding. And again, throughout the state, when you talk about the effect of pandemic, it's affected kids academically, there's been a loss, and the social, emotional part too. I don't have up there with data, but it's been significant. But all the school districts in the state dropped considerably on the MCAs from this past spring, but we keep track of that. Here's one on reading and kids meeting or exceeding, and then finally in science. We've managed to stay near the top of our neighboring school districts, but we look for much greater improvement this next year. Enrollment trends, you can see going back to 1314, that was actually my first year as superintendent. I'm just, I'm on my ninth year right now, and you can see the enrollment. We've been growing on average about a percent and a half per year, and you can see we've reached our highest 1920 the year that the pandemic started, and we had a considerable drop, over 200 students last year for 2021. So that, it's been a big factor in our budget. I know, you know, the city, obviously, getting asset funds and stuff like that, you know, New Prague with a low free reduced lunch, the money that we got from the federal government is actually quite low, is about, from all three funds we got, came to about 1.2 million, and of course, a lot of it went to COVID care stuff, and it was pretty restricted. You compare that 1.2 million that we got just down the road, Northfield got 4.5 million, and Fairbowl, about the same size, or actually smaller than us, had over 7 million funds. So we're still, it's been a struggle. I'll go over finances here in a little bit, but it had a, you know, a great impact on our budget too. I can see where we're at right now in the 2122 school year, and those are our projections as we move forward. We really believe, especially the growth what we're seeing in the Elko New Market area and Lonsdale, we project to continue to go up after this.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Does this include distance as well? So is this everybody enrolled in?
Yeah, that are enrolled in our school. I mean, the drop came when we talked over 200 students, a lot of homeschool, and then we had online learning, and then we lost some to private schools. So it was a combination of all three, and obviously, and what was interesting, I don't think I have this slide on there, our open enrollment, you know, we're over a net probably 400 students that, a net gain, 400 students open enrollment in our district, especially on our eastern border here, for example. I think it's probably above plus 65. We did not lose open enrollment students. It was within, which was sort of interesting. So that's what we're projecting in our budget. Our current elementary grade size, okay, this is with all three elementarys, so Eagle View here and Elko New Market included. You can see right now what happened last year with our kindergarten, now it's in first grade right now, dropped down to 241, and we're at 294, and we're projecting next year for 290, which is a pretty conservative estimate on us. Elementary class size by grade, you know, basically, we have very low class sizes. You want to compare, when there's a comparison done by the metro school organization and of the 40 school districts around the metropolitan area outside St. Paul and Minneapolis, we're usually elementary-wise in the top five or six every single year, and you can see that up there. It's pretty good class sizes. Graduation rate is 96%. State average is 84. That's also one of our academic goals, and you can see there where kids are going to college, two-year workforce, and military. There's our enrollment again, and then broken down by elementary school, middle school, and then our high school. Our fund balance history, where we're at right now, you can see we reached a peak in 1516, which is, I think, about 26%. Just so you know, our board goal is 8%, and we were able to maintain that pretty well, but you can see the drop from 1920 to 2021, and as we head into next year, we're getting closer to the goal. So we're keeping an eye on that. We're, obviously, the last couple of years, or especially last year and going into this year, cutting back a little bit. I don't foresee us, because, you know, we're, the reason it went up, obviously, enrollment increase, I mean, you want to be going up, and it's obviously been very good to us. We've been able to do a lot of different things and, you know, still save real thin administratively and keep the class sizes low.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, go ahead.
Maybe I'm just missing something, but when you said the goal is 8%, 8% of what?
8% of our total budget. So our total budget is 46 million.
Yeah.
You know, basically, it was 3.4, don't quote me at 46 million, but something like that.
Sure.
3.42 would be 8% of that.
Okay, got it.
Current number of employees we have, certified, basically, teachers, administrators, being the teachers, 302. You can see it's broken down. We have many more part-time employees, so it doesn't have everyone there, but these are full-time. And I just want to say, our teachers, our support staff you see up there have been absolutely phenomenal during this whole pandemic. It's been a struggle. We've had shortages. We've got, when you talk about bus drivers, we've got teachers driving bus before school. We've got HR specialists driving bus. We've got people stepping up administratively in our business office, principals handing out food, working with the food service, clerical, same thing. So unbelievably remarkable, our teachers, there's been a lot of decision made, and, you know, probably a few people didn't agree with some of my decisions, but our teachers have been phenomenal in staying, keeping a positive attitude, and there's been a lot of stress in all areas, but that's where we're at there. Some things that are new in our activities program, for the most part, we went down a class in sports, so if it's a four-class system, for example, we're in the third biggest one instead of being with the biggest, which is a nice thing. And volleyball, for example, this past week, we took third place at the state meet. Or if it's a two-class, a lot of times we were dropped down to 1A, for example, in boys hockey. And we're also in a new conference right now. You can see the schools up there, and we're really excited about that. I know Robbinsdale Cooper and Bloomington Kennedy are dropping out of the conference after this year, so we'll have eight teams instead of 10 that you see up there. So it's a mixture of, you know, schools that, for example, four-class system that are in 3A, and there are some in 4A. So we feel it's a good mix, and we're excited about joining that conference. Just also with our vision of excellence, on the left there, we just talked about some of the championships. We've been, in the past 12 years, we won seven state championships. We've had 12 individuals win state titles and 31 team appearances in the state. Concurrent enrollment, when we talk about one of our priorities being comprehensive programming, you know, we really want to meet the needs of all kids, whether it's college prep or kids that are gonna go vocational, stuff like that. We have, you know, advanced placement classes, CIS classes, so when we say concurrent enrollment, they're getting, being able to get college credit. Same with vocational coding classes, our Mars program, career explorations, we have classes that are outside the school that meet with, you know, have business guests and mentors and stuff like that. So it's been very good for us, and you can see the different academic domains that's in. And then we do a parent survey, and I'd say the 32 statements, I think 30 of the 32 were 90% and above, and overall satisfaction was 95%. And I say that, and actually, last year, even though we stayed in the 90s, went down about a percentage or two with everyone, because people just were not very in a good mood last year. You probably know that. Anyway, some of the awards that we've been recognized for in the last few years, back in 2017, one of the best high schools, top 7% middle school. This past year is ranked one of the top 6% middle schools in Minnesota. Safety and security, just like the town of Elko, New Market being recognized for that. Our schools were recognized for that too, and then being one of the top workplaces by the Star Tribune. So just thought I'd share that, but that's where we're at right now. The, you know, when we talk about enrollment, one of the things I want to talk about, and I talked about this, I think I was here about two, three years ago when we were at things, where we're at, what, we had been meeting with our architects to plan for the future, and I think I've told you at Eagle View, the plans were in place. We haven't got to the board yet, and we probably would have if we didn't have the pandemic to start talking about it, but just administratively with our architect, our schools right now, enrollment are all basically about 600 right now. They, they, we can, they're built for 700, and we did a drop, but we're coming back up near the 600 mark this past year, and we're gonna have to see where it goes. But I know one of the initial plans that our architect has, which makes the most sense, is redoing the boundaries and at some point extending or building on to the Elko New Market site at Eagle View Elementary and going with the 5-8 middle school there too. So we have a 5-8 in town in New Prague and a 5-8 Elko New Market when we get to that point, but I think it's been pushed out a few years, and so we're still really in the informal talking stage in regards to that. I know a question, talked to Tom, question I know came up before you about preschool. We are not completely full, but in our popular times for preschool, we are at a maximum. Actually, our preschool is taking four of the classrooms in Eagle View right now, four exits. That would be for normal classes that we have for K-5, and so we are pretty full there, there, but we do have plenty of room right now for other classes there for K-5. Any questions?
Shout out to Ms. Kayla at preschool at Eagle View. She rocks.
Does she?
Yes. No, how's COVID looking? Any?
Well.
I don't want to jinx anything.
No, you know what? We, you know, we went with mass recommendation. We did not do the mandate going into this year. The governor wasn't gonna mandate it, so it was up to the school districts. You know, I think you gotta know your community, and I think if I look at data, which I believe in really making decisions based on data, our COVID rate in the school, within the schools with our kids, has went up early. We were probably at about 45, 50 cases per week. We have it right on our dashboard, right? But it's been the last four, five weeks in the teens. This week's jumped up, we'll probably end at about 25. But what's interesting, the surrounding districts around us that went with the mask mandate, if you got per population the number of infections, they're even higher than ours. So, you know, I don't want to get on a soapbox here or talk about anything, but you can talk about vaccinations, and people can do what they want, but we're hanging in there. Again, our teachers, you know, we recommend it, so we have teachers and students that do wear masks, but yeah, knock on wood, it's, things have been going pretty well, and I don't know, hopefully the end is near, right? But it's taken a toll on everybody, and like I said, that's why I put that stuff up there. We've had a lot of, it's had a lot of impact on our system, whether through employee groups with students or, you know, performance and stuff like that. But I can tell you this, the kids want as normal school experience as possible, and that's what we're trying to deliver to them, and overall, it's going very well.
Well, I appreciate everything you do for the students in this community and everything you do for the community as a whole, so thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I also want to say too, I think a big thing, I think a very important thing is too, the collaboration and working together between the district and our communities, Elko New Market, New Prague, and Lonsdale, whereby, you know, we share things and field space, and, you know, you're doing a lot of our buildings and grounds work. We really appreciate that. We'll continue to stay in communication.
As Tom points out from time to time, you are one of the few people that actually answers their phone when you're calling us, so.
I don't do anything else.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Representative Farr.
Perfect.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. So speaking of hard acts to follow, 95% approval rating for the school district.
Should we pull yours up?
It's unofficial, but I don't think it's a reverse of that, unfortunately. So ask questions at any time, and then, I guess what I'd love to hear from you is, what's your view and what do you need? You know, I think, one of the questions that Tom or Joe had asked is what's this section gonna look like? I'm trying to figure that out myself, quite honestly, being new at this, but.
Folks I talk to, I think it's, you know, it's gonna be one way or the other. It's, you know, it's in the House anyway, it's controlled by the Democrats, they're the majority, and, you know, a couple of weeks ago, Virginia and statewide didn't go so well, and so there's at least a thought process that there will be more focus on being reelected than getting our jobs done. Shouldn't be that way, in my opinion, but I think there may be some of that. So I'm curious to see what that looks like, you know, it's a year when we traditionally do some bonding, and so I think we'll see some of that, that the only thing that's out in the district right now is a Project for Bell plan that's on the slate. It's not to say that there can't be something else, but that's the only one that's on the slate right now, so. And it's also redistricting year, so, you know, I've seen all kinds of different maps, probably more of them than not, don't show me over here in the future, but who knows, right? I quit looking at them because you could, you know, drive you mad. So, you know, things that, things that I'm gonna be working on, priorities for me, and I've talked to Tim about this before, and some of you all in the communities, it's just the equity between in-state and outstate when it comes to local government aid, when it comes to our school systems, when it comes to townships and the money they get. And I'm sure there's somebody sitting in the metro saying it's just fine, right? But I'm convinced it's not, and so I'm always trying to work towards leveling the playing field with the, you know, with the schools and the disparity in funding there between the intercity school and what, New Prague or Leuser Henderson or the school districts out here are getting, and then you see, you all see it, and LGA and those sort of things. So I think that's something, you know, that won't be solved this year by any means, but it's something that I keep hammering on, and, you know, and one of the, one of the things I said, talking to the New Prague Rotary, if we continue to fund education like we did last year where we had a percentage to everything, that gap just keeps widening, right? So we've got to look at doing that in different, in a different manner, I think, just to level the playing field, so. So that's one, you know, reinsurance was a big one. We were able to get, so it's health insurance, if your employer has your health insurance, it probably doesn't impact you a whole lot, but it's, who it impacts is those small businesses and mom-and-pop shops, farms, those sort of people, and so we were able to get about a year of that, so the next year funded and not beyond, and so I think we need to do that this year. Why? I have no idea. It was probably the most bipartisan thing across the country in the past few years. There's several memos out there touting its effectiveness that have, you know, the governor and every one of our congressional delegates signing it, you know. So it was, it was a very bipartisan idea in the past, and for some reason, we didn't, we didn't fully fund it this year, and so without that, those folks can look at the estimates I've seen as a 30% increase in healthcare cost going forward, and so I don't think that that's the end-all, fix-all to insurance. It's definitely not to our healthcare system, but in the absence of anything better, I think, I think it's something that we need to continue to work on. And there's a couple other small things, you know, one of them in the, being on the commerce committee, some liquor issues, you know, I talked to guys up here at St. Patrick's in the ball field, I mean, 3-2, we're the last state in the union to have 3-2 beer. They're not making it anymore, there's, you know, and so those, you know, if you have a 3-2 license, what do you do? And them selling a couple beers after a baseball game puts dollars in the copper to mow the lawn and do whatever else, so. So there's some of those, some of those things that I think need to be fixed, so. I don't know, again, I don't know what the session's gonna look like there, and I'm, I've struggled with this first year doing it all through Zoom, you know? It's just no way to conduct business, it's no way to develop relationships, and at the end of the day, some of these things, if you want to get them through, you gotta start today and hope that three or four years from now, you can garner enough support. And doing that through a computer screen is, you know, I've joked, being now at some meetings in person, it's like, ah, Joe, I didn't recognize you. Maybe if you were on a computer screen, I would recognize you, because that's the way I've met with everybody last year, so. So I, you know, and it looks as though we're gonna be that way again in the House, so. But things that are important to you or anything?
I can ask questions, but. Okay, I make, I can ask questions, but go for it whenever you want.
Or questions, yeah.
Well, I, just softball. I mean, what was the, what was the biggest surprise last year as your first year?
Yeah.
What was the biggest challenge? What was the biggest surprise?
So, you know what? I, I understood what I was getting into, but I did not have an appreciation for what it meant to be in the minority. You know, I didn't, and, and, you know, maybe shame on me, but I'm on three committees, pretty much everyone is, judiciary, housing, and commerce. Probably listened to hundred and fifty to two hundred and ten bills in those committees, all total. I can almost count the number of Republican bills on this. I think I need a couple of fingers on this hand. And I didn't, I, shame on me. I guess I thought maybe we would listen to other ideas. And, you know, so, so that was, that was, I think, the, the biggest eye-opener for me.
Can I call up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because, man, I told you, yeah. And it's just, and that's one of the most frustrating parts, you know, knowing the process and then participating in the process up there and seeing the, this, the, the split and how stupid it is at times. And, I mean, quite frankly, it's just, it gets us nowhere. I mean, I don't care if you're Republican or Democrat or, you know, whatever. I wish we could all just figure out how to, to work through stuff. Do you think that there's a reasonable chance you can get any of that stuff done? I mean, I still think the House is going to flip this go-around, but even if it does, it's going to be the same games on the other side.
Right.
It's going to be the same crap. And then there's not going to be Democrats getting anything heard in, in any of the committees either. What is it going to take for, for the leadership of the caucuses or the leadership of some of the parties to actually move beyond party politics, which is what we are all about, I guess, so?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Was it a soapbox for a minute?
I wish, no, I, I wish, wish for an easier answer to that one because I don't think there is. I think, you know, I've said many times, and it, and again, it doesn't matter what side of the, you're on, and way out here to the right, there's ten or fifteen percent. And way out here to the left, there are ten, fifteen percent. And the other, you know, seventy, eighty percent of us just want to try and find common sense solution for the good. But, but, but those groups are more active, louder, and making more noise than your average person that's just in the middle and wants that common sense solution. And so right now, I think it's continuing to get worse, not better.
So can I just ask you, and again, I'd say this to a representative that was Democratic, just when or if you become the majority, can you foster some of that bipartisan spirit to allow for that to happen? Encourage your committee chairs to do that?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I had heard, when I was having this conversation, I'd heard somebody, I mean, they, the first bill, bill that year is, is from the minority when they, when they're a committee chair, just to, you know, try and bridge that gap somehow. I think that's a great idea. And I think there's, there's other ways you can do it. But, yeah, I'm not, you know, not positive it won't be just as bad if it does flip, right? But I agree with you, and I think we can do better. No question.
Any other questions?
The issue related to three-two beer and three-two licenses, it's real. We've contacted by our...
Local nonprofits, the ball teams mostly.
Right.
It's, it's a real, it's a real issue because at some point, they're not going to be able to secure, secure three-two. And the way Minnesota State statute is set up around liquor licensing, it leaves them very little or no options then to provide that good, which is a major revenue source for them as an organization. So I would echo, yes, that's a, that's a real issue. Because they've approached us and we're like, we don't control this. This is a state issue. The other item is housing. You're familiar with it. We've had a discussion. I won't go over it all here, but we would ask for your support related to our positions. We have a very strong, consistent consensus within your district related to some of the housing legislation that's been coming through. And of course, you're familiar with Jasper, and he's aware of that and looked into that. One of the other things, just generally, is issues related to local control and mandates. There seems to have been, there's always has been, but in the last decade, there seems to have been this growing need that a minority will not like the way that things are being done by their local decision makers. So they'll try and do an end run and go to the legislature related to their issue with their elected officials in their community. And there's a couple of things wrong with that. One, they're local issues and really the state should be stepping in. If it's a local issue, they should address it locally. That's what elections are for. Two, the other issue is that those solutions end up being one-size-fits-all solutions that affect everybody. And even if arguably in that locality, they're bad players, it ends up having a negative effect on everybody, on everybody else. You know, Jimmy threw a spitball, so we're going to punish the whole class type of deal. So that's an issue. And so just in a general sense, just be aware of that. And then lastly, and you've been good about it so far, is that when there's bills that are coming through the committees that you're on or other ones that you're aware of that just have an impact, we'd ask that you contact the mayor or myself to just get feedback on is, how does this, how does this affect you? And over the years, we've had legislators that are excellent at that and have had some that, not so much. And we would just ask to foster that communication, that, getting our feedback and how it affects our residents.
Yeah. And I think, and I would ask, and I know I said it to you, too, that the same thing back, because as I go to that committee meeting and listen, even after I listen to the bill, I may not fully understand how that does impact you. I may, may have some ideas how that does, but not, not fully. And so when you see those things that you know will impact you, don't hesitate to reach out, reach out, you know, put a plug in my ear and let me know what your thoughts are, or how that does impact you as well. Because I'll never know your business as well as you know your business.
And you've always been accessible whenever we made a call and appreciate that.
Yeah.
Call me anytime.
And I would just follow up to the local control stuff, too. And I'm definitely in the minority when it comes to local governance issues when it comes to this stance. I would just say, don't assume, though, that we think every, I think everything should be local government control. Because I think there are certain policies that should be statewide that make a whole lot more sense instead of a patchwork type approach to things. But I think it goes to that last point. Just ask. I mean, and I think you'll get a lot of opinions from folks like us that are willing to offer it, so.
I get lots of opinions. I can assure you of that. So, yeah, and it's always, it's always which one makes the most sense, you know. Because you get opinions on both sides of the spectrum, so.
Yeah. No, I, I, I tend to agree more. I'm not a big mandate person. I mean, in general, I'd rather stay away from it and let, you know, I've said this many times, problems are always solved the best at the lowest level, right? And so let them, let them be solved there and not get involved. You don't have to. But to your point, there are times when there's good reason to have some sort of, some sort of state-level mandate or whatever that is.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. On to public, on to public comment? No? All right. Consent agenda. Any questions or any motions?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Kate, second by Josh, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. And the passes. Public hearings, general business.
Do we need a presentation on this, or can we just jump right to the voting?
No, we can just move straight into it if the council would like. I just need to note that because of Kate's role on the Board of the Chamber, she'll need to abstain. I have had received the question in the past that, well, if you only have three, is that okay? It is. Because if you think of it, you still have two voting members of the quorum. And as long as the majority of the quorum approves it, it can pass.
Good.
Motion to approve Resolution 21-67.
Motion by Josh, all seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All abstained?
Abstained.
All right, motion passes. On to reports.
So, under administration, keeping one second to call the banner options. So we previously gone to the council and asked for feedback on the design options for the banners for the decorative streetlights.
And that was a while back. Kevin brought it in. Unfortunately, with Kevin's departure, that item fell kind of on the back burner for a while. So I asked Mark to pick it up. We went through and we took all the feedback. We got related to the designs and we forwarded to the designer for the two final versions that the council had requested for a decision. This is what they came back with. There's might, if we need to make a minor tweak, like, oh, we need to move this to the left or right or something like that, we can still do that. But we really are looking for the council to make a decision. We're at the point of year where if we order them tomorrow, we could have them by Christmas, we think, and have them up. So the guys at Public Works, as you've seen, have already have the arms up. So it's a relatively straightforward matter to actually install them at this point. By the way, the Christmas decoration, the Christmas decorations are up. We just have to, we found out that there was a wiring issue with all of the outlets because it's the first time we used them. So the vendor is coming back to take care of that issue. But it should be taken care of shortly. And after that, we're just waiting for, hopefully it'll be done by Thanksgiving. When Thanksgiving is over, we'll flip the switch, so to speak, and then they'll be operating. So with regards to this, what is the council's decision?
I like the left.
Gosh, you want people to write just to mix things up?
Doesn't matter.
I just think when you're driving down the road to tilt your head to read city of is kind of crazy, I think.
All right, left it is.
Self-informed decision. We floated this around the office, and it wasn't a single vote to the right. It was all the one on the left.
Perfect.
Right? So we will get those ordered directly.
Okay.
Planning augmentation.
Which do you mind?
Planning augmentation services. So the council has seen a need for an additional finding position. So ideally, after the first of the year, we were going to have two plans, Haley, somebody else in the rain. With Haley's departure, after the first year, we'll technically be down two positions. Thankfully, we are ordering the hiring process for the expansion position. It's going to become a backfilling position, though, at this point. We have a lot going on. As you've seen from my updates, there's quite a bit of activity, both housekeeping items and response to development items. So our concern is whether or not we're able to actually keep up. Adding that position was to keep us from basically be able to be responsive, and now we're going to be in a worse position. It's not uncommon for communities to go out and basically do warp, load, peak addressing through bringing in consulting firms. That's what we're proposing to do. It's kind of a, at this point, the actual scope is a little undefined. It really depends on how quickly we can fill the vacancies and the experience of the individuals we're bringing in and the volume of work that's coming through. We contacted three firms in the area that have engineering wings. The way that the industry's going is your engineering, or your client consulting firms are being absorbed by your large engineering firms. So WSB, ISG, BMI, for example. And we contacted all three of those firms. All of them are quality firms. They have really good reputations. They all have really good, you know, feedback work firms in general. ISG declined. They're doing a lot of work with private clients who have an interest in the community. Aidments, for one, they've been contacted, advised. They've been contacted in the past by national builders who have an interest in the community. So they're kind of, no, that, that's too much of a conflict of interest. But thank you for contacting us. We contacted IS, WSB. They gave us a proposal. And BMI gave us proposals as well. We're still working through those. We've requested some supplemental information from one of the proposers, and we expect to have that. What I would be asking is basically permission from the council for the security services. If you guys are okay. The reality is, we will probably run over on our consulting mo, we will run over on our consulting fees. There will be an offset, though, because we will be, at least after the first of the year, we'll be budgeted for position. The other thing that's helping out is, as you mentioned, Haley's been working on a number of projects that she is absolutely knee-deep in. And she has offered to work for us remotely on a part-time basis for the next month or two to get those couple of items wrapped up. For instance, as you guys know, she's been working on the new business zoning ordinance, redo, things like that. Those things are fairly well-developed. Renee would like her to finish it out, and Haley has actually offered on her own to do that. So while her last full-time day will be December first, I plan on keeping her on a part-time basis until she wraps up those projects. So probably somewhere in the ballpark of six to eight weeks.
Anyone have objections to anything in this statement? Anything passed on from Public Works?
Uh, no.
Police Department, you want to give an update on police?
Do it. No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Quite the increase in the incidents from last year in October to this year.
Yeah, what do you have to say about that?
Three hundred and fifty-six...
He's never coming to another council.
I knew when I had to ask questions, I would, I'm, I'm sick. I got this thing. I got...
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just assuming that it's because people are out and about now, whereas last year they were not.
Yes, that is going to be part of it. For further questions, you're going to have to speak to somebody who's going to be more, and give you a better...
Okay. I think you did just...
Yeah, that's good. Numbers are up. Good is good.
You did good. Thank you.
Is there anything for fire?
Nope. We will be bringing back the contracts for the purchase of the fire trucks. We had a couple of things after the internal legal person at the vendor went through our contract. They had some things that they want to change. Most of them were minor. The other one is the same thing that happened last time, where after they gave us the quote, they go, oh, wait, it didn't include the performance bond amount. So we have to go back. This happened last time we ordered from this vendor. We talked to him about it this time. It happened again. So that'll be coming back on the second.
Okay.
They'll, it sounds like they're still going to keep things moving based on a certain level of confidence that we're going to move forward. So it won't slow us down, but we'll have to bring those contracts back.
Rich?
I have nothing for you.
Okay. Community Development, I think Renee left. Anything from Parks?
In the Parks Department, I have been starting to serve the Parks Commission from a staff standpoint. Mark's been participating remotely. Mark will be done with anything regular responsibilities at the end of the year. The plan was for him to be done, done, done. But the reality is, with Kevin's departure, the timing of bringing Jessica on board, it doesn't give any time for Mark, who has now the only institutional knowledge related to recreational programming, to Jessica. I've had some discussions with him, and he would be willing on basically a contract hourly basis to do that for us. After the first of the year, we don't know yet if that'll be necessary, but I might be coming back to you guys in December with something if it looks like it's going to be needed.
Okay. CCEC, nothing. Other committee reports, scale. I'm not sure who all has, who else jumping on the online part of scale.
I totally missed it. You were, you were hunting. I totally forgot.
I, I was there. I mean, it was, I watched it online. It was, it was good. I mean, it was nothing groundbreaking and new, but there was a good conversation about, you know, how to work with legislators, how to actually get things done if you have something that you want to advocate for. And, again, not really new information, but always good to hear stuff, so. But like I said, nothing really groundbreaking. Anything on service delivery?
Uh, yeah, we just had a meeting on Monday, a good meeting. The, the presentation was on alternative energy, the main item, alternative forms of energy. The Public Utilities Director, Bruce Reiners from New Prague, came over to give a presentation. New Prague is actually the only city in the county where the city is also the electrical provider. So they're the Excel in town. And he talked about the whole alternative energy industry as a whole, how it really affects providers, to kind of give us a little bit of a peek behind the curtain. It doesn't really change anything we've done or we're doing. It gives us a better understanding of what we're seeing on more the consumer end. But their view also as a city is a little bit different than most of the other cities because they're all on a consumer role as opposed to a producer position. But it was nice to have that larger context. We got an update on the presentation December on legalization of marijuana. You really, really want to participate in that if you can. They're going to have a full panel of experts. They'll have Representative Hanson back on the panel. They'll have a number of representatives speaking on land use, impact on social services, impact on schools, impact on law enforcement. Plus, they will have representatives from Colorado Springs and possibly Manitow Springs from Colorado to talk about what they've seen for an impact on their communities. For example, Colorado Springs, even though it's not, they have, you bike city by city there, you can choose whether or not it's... you can choose whether or not it's allowed to sell. Manitow does, Colorado Springs doesn't, they're neighbors. Colorado Springs has a whole division that their purpose is to basically look at and study the effects of the use of legalized recreational marijuana, city and services and whatnot. And they'll be coming and speaking on that. So it should be a really good presentation. I don't know how they're going to fit it into an hour and a half.
That's the next scale maybe, right?
That's the next scale.
Yeah.
Uh, the other item, other items that we went over, we're basically looking at our work agenda for the next year. I really wanted to push the group to be a little bit more proactive because we're in a little bit of a lull right now. Some of the big projects are starting to wind down. And what it really looks like, our big project is going to, our big projects are going to revolve around coordination related to public safety. So one of the issues is, you guys have heard the discussions related to LETG. Brady's talked about it. That's our law enforcement information system. So it's the computers and the squads, and they put everything into it. It accumulates all the data. That product basically is up for replacement in about four years. And so we're having discussions about trying to get ahead of it. Implementation last time, while good intentions, wasn't the best, and there are lessons learned. And one of them is to get way out ahead of what you need or how to the system ahead of time. So we're going to start actually working on that now. The other item, and I mentioned this issue before, is staffing and dispatch. So it's one of the hidden things in our public safety system, but it's also the nexus of providing services is the dispatch. And one of the issues that they're seeing is that just with normal growth in the county, they're seeing increased levels of calls. And so the issue of dispatching and how that's handled going into the future is actually a big issue. It's a huge cross, it's a big driver in the county's law enforcement budget, actually. And then the other part of that is just the nature of the calls. We'll start to see a greater set of calls going to fire and report to the county because they're going to be pulled behind the crews. Same calls were being done, but whether they dispatched, as they would have been dispatched to police, then police would have called fire on a local radio frequency, called their fire department to do it. And now that they have dedicated fire, those calls are directed to fire. And the way the systems work is fire calls are handled separately, dispatches are upon police calls. And so there's a lot of work to be done about how it is. Coordinated. And then the last thing, of course, is the continued work on the, you guys, you guys, I think, have seen it. There's a presentation at scale of the dashboard that's being created by the data analyst that Scale is funding to be able to pull and better extract and analyze law enforcement data. That is now moving into rollout mode and establishing user groups, start looking at the finalized product and actually tweaking it going, going forward. And the last item is the work on the localized law enforcement staffing model, which got put on hold when the previous person, physician, left. That now will start getting picked up and, and running. I'm more intimately involved in these, in that item because of my role in the steering group for that position, so.
Okay. Did I see the updates for MVTA and I-35 were emailed out?
I sent out I-35, MVTA.
It was just I-35?
Yep.
But was anyone at MVTA? All right. Chamber of Commerce?
Sunday is the annual meeting. It's free, noon, back room at Firehouse Grill. A game will be showing on the big screen TV and then appetizer buffet.
Right on. Discussion by council. Are any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.